And welcome to the Thursday, March 13, 2025, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:06 and we are meeting at the Lakeville Police Station at 323 Bedford Street. We do have late cam recording this evening, even though we're not going live. We do have a quorum here tonight. We also have two members who are on speaker. They won't be taking votes with us, but they will be available to ask questions or share comments. If you want to do attendance.
Sure. Cabral present.
We have Karen here.
Wilga present.
And we have our Town Planner Nancy Durfee and our Clerk Kathy Murray here. Is anyone else recording for the record? Hearing none. The first item on our agenda was an A and R plan for County Street, but that has been withdrawn. So our second item on the agenda is a site plan review for Ten Harding Street, which was continued to this evening upon the application for a site plan review and approval submitted by Lex Development Inc. for the construction of a proposed 13,300 square foot building, associated driveways, parking areas, and utilities. Now, we did get quite a bit of information this today, this afternoon. So I don't think we've had enough time to really.
So yeah, so anything that was submitted today, we're not really at a point to discuss it. You can certainly present anything, but we're not.
Right, understood.
No, we understand that things come in and you're trying to get.
Can I just add to why you got that today? Just so you know, so in the background. So we did the original presentation and then we were waiting for prices from the review engineers and we got that and it took some time to get those pricing. The original price we had a concern, it was very high and we get a second price, which was much better and we went with that one. And they took a little while. So we got those comments back last week. So we did respond to all of those comments and get them in. I know it was today, but it was a lot of information, but it was the quickest we could get it done.
And typically what we do is we'll take that and send it back to peer review.
Yeah, I understand.
And they'll check it all off and they'll tell us if the items closed. So I mean, if there's something that you wanted to print, present tonight.
Tim Hash, President of Lex Development, sorry to cut you off, I apologize. So we would like to go through the comments to make sure that the board. Last time we were here, it seemed like the board was very receptive of the project and liked it. Nothing to do with you guys. We're under a timeline on this and I don't know if we're going to get another extension signed on this. I mean, the foundation can sit there for another 30 years. I don't know that answer. I begged for the last one. I'm going to beg for the next one. It's possible this might be the last time you could potentially see us here with this project. I don't know. I mean, the owners of the property have been very, very sweet and nice to me, but they told me this time it was the last one and I'm going to beg for another one. But I just, I'd like to go through all the comments to make sure. Everybody was happy with it. I was kind of thinking when the comments went over, we've got a local engineer that designed the plan, that's been working in town for 30 plus years and probably did hundreds of designs in town, I would assume. But I do understand, I understand the procedure, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, so I mean, typically, like I said, it'll go back to peer review. They'll just go through and they'll say, like, if you've properly addressed it, they'll just say item closed, 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 and then they'll give us whatever items they still feel are, you know, within our purview of condition, et cetera. You know, obviously it's a lengthy stormwater report. Like I said, unless there's something specific that you want to go through, I don't see the need in going through every single item unless there's certain ones that you had a question about that.
Just whether the project can go forward. That's it, honestly.
I mean, I really, I really.
I mean, it looks like you're moving forward.
I don't think that.
Well, it's about signing an extension. If I don't sign an extension, I can't buy the project, so. It's not just like a, it's not a small, single-family home, you know? It's quite the investment here and the, I don't know, the owner's just, it is what it is. It's my, nothing to do with you guys.
Yeah, and I really, in terms of the comments, there was nothing in there that was substantial. They were all easily addressed. I think we did address all of their comments. I would hope that they're okay with all of the responses.
Yeah, there was a handful of comments that were bringing up about architectural and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, okay, so the architectural.
That we've already talked about.
So we did, we did see the rendering. You know, we were all, I believe, pretty favorable about the renderings, but we do ask that when you file your site plan, you do include.
Well, when we file with the building apartment, yes, certainly we'll be.
Well, no.
Well, the site plan review.
Yes, so we need.
The rendering has to be part of the site plan review.
Yeah, we need the elevations.
Which I think, I believe there. We did submit initially. We submitted.
So as long as they're in the site plan review packet, that's okay, but.
They were certainly schematic in nature, but we did file the renderings of the building.
Yeah, like we talked about last time, I don't want to go through a whole architectural design 100%. We wanted to give you guys a good idea of what's going out there before we went to that point, because this thing could be dead in the water tomorrow, you know what I mean? So we just can't go that next step. We already got enough invested in this that I can't keep going back.
So as long as we have the rendering.
I thought we were past that, yeah. I think everyone agreed that they liked what they skipped.
Okay.
I don't know, I think there's still a number of items that I would be questionable.
Yeah.
I believe I would need more information from Nate based on his response. It's still, to me, is not, it doesn't meet the requirement for number one on the response. In my opinion, anyway.
The question is, we don't have the ability to apply for.
Yeah, I don't believe you, I don't think he qualifies for that.
Well, he's the chief zoning enforcement officer.
That's why I would want more information from him to understand how he feels, like how that.
I mean, we've permitted similar projects of similar.
I did see his response, yes.
Oh, with the citation to the regulation and stuff, that response?
Yes, I did, I read the citation. I just had more questions.
Okay. Yeah, that's certainly an important question to answer. We have permitted similar projects of similar size in town that were afforded the density bonuses.
Yeah, the packing with a building of that size is very important to us, especially with whatever uses we get.
Not a 35,000.
Yeah, but the first part of the regulation he highlights says it's subject to site plan review under this section or 35,000 square feet.
I understand. I would just require that the board get more information, as this just happened very late this afternoon. With a very quick response. I would think that there would be a number of conditions added to this decision based on the lack of information that you have received. The board doesn't have, they haven't produced any uses, which provides parking issues. So you would want to, like, he would have to come back should uses be excessive to, you know, to the parking as well. Condition that the height be no greater than 35 feet. There's, like, there's a number of things that I would add to that, that I can provide.
We should probably talk about those right now, then I would say, right? So we come back, if we do come back.
Yep.
I think that's what we get over with now.
Okay, is it the height?
Yeah, so the height is under 35.
Yes, I know, I'm just telling the board.
No, I understand.
So typically what happens when a site plan review is approved, is approved with conditions. So she's just telling you, these would be the expected conditions.
Almost.
That would be included.
Since it's happening quickly and there's so little detail. Provided as far as the uses. So there are things in here that, you know, and even when you responded on the height, it said it would be no more than 35, it would be less than 35 feet. So I'm just saying, we'll condition it that way since there is no actual height on the plan of the building.
Absolutely.
And the condition of the final architect, so you're talking here about, you've given them the architectural plans, but then again, you said draft plans will be presented later. So then I would just say that, condition be that final architectural approval will be required prior to construction. A request for all the waivers in writing should have been provided so that they know what all the different waivers are that you're asking for, because I see that there were some in here that were added as a, you know, saying that you would be requesting a waiver, which was number 12. Number 19, I would condition that water allocation agreement be provided to the planning board when completed with the select board and the city of Taunton. This WIP plan should be provided at point of construction. And a condition illicit discharge as well would also be added. And those are just the things that I'm seeing now and I haven't, you know, they have no idea what's going to come back from the review, from the peer reviewer, so. And then the Board of Health and the Fire Department have not responded yet because they only just got it this afternoon. So there's no response from them on those items and I didn't cover those as conditions as of yet, because I'm waiting to hear back from the Board of Health and the Fire Department. So there's still some missing pieces that would need to be determined, I would believe, before, you know, an approval could be provided.
Thinking, yes, because I myself, I haven't had a chance to go through these very closely at all.
Sure. And I just did, I just did it very quickly and that's what I've seen, just do the quick review.
Okay, so I do think we'll have to continue this. Like I said, Jack, did you have some, a question that you had? Jack?
Yeah, I don't want to oversimplify this, but we're looking for the exterior architectural renderings and we're looking for the exterior building dimensions, right? And I would also want to make sure, are we meeting ADA requirements? Are we meeting the requirements of the fact that it's ours, being obligated, you know, a ladder truck around?
Right, so those are two things that Nancy did just bring up about the final architectures and then the Board of Health and Fire. So our next meeting is March 27. Can we continue? Are you agreeable to continue to then so we can get this to peer review, have a chance to digest it a little better and any, you know, further communication, I'm sure.
Yeah, insist that the peer review be done in a timely fashion to get to the March 27 meeting.
Right, the hope is, can we pressure the peer review consultant to make sure that they have them in within a reasonable amount of time or?
They have them, since we got them today, we sent them right away and then we will let them know that we would prefer them for the 27th, yeah.
They thought they would be ready by then.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll have a response from the peer review by the 27th.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to continue this hearing to the 27th?
I'll make a motion to continue the Ten Harding Street till March 27, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second? Oh, actually, Dan, Jeff, Dan will need a second.
Second.
And all in favor of members present?
Cabral, aye.
Okay, can I?
Wilga, aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Lakeville Golf Course Discussion, Derek Maxey. So we don't have anything in our packet. Do you have any, do you have anything to present or is it more like a verbal?
Uh, no, so for the, just for the record, my name's Derek Maxey, I'm the Lakeville Country Club. And, no, I just, I've been giving it some thought and I've spoken with your Town Planner Nancy and trying to come up with maybe like a master plan for the Lakeville Country Club. I mean, I've gotten all different kinds of offer opportunities, this and that, and I mean, you guys have seen most of them, between industrial, residential, small industrial, this and that. So, and I thought it just as a courtesy, I wanted to come sit with the board and say, you know, guys, what do you think? Can we put our heads together and maybe do something that'll work for the town? And, you know, you know, we have a gentleman that's interested in doing some condos, but what happens after that? You know, and if that happens, you know, and I'm still on the fence on all of that as well. So I thought maybe if we could maybe get a small group together, residents are more than welcome and maybe a person from planning board, Board of Health, whatever, and maybe come up with a plan that might work for the town and make it feasible for me. So that's why I'm here to kind of see if we can come up with some sort of plan.
So currently it's own business.
Correct.
It seems like a lot of people were in favor of a senior overlay. If you don't mind, I would like to invite anyone who's interested in speaking to this.
Absolutely.
I think Noel seems to be, to me, very eager.
Reservoir Ave, I live right near your, your place of business there. I'll tell you, it's, Reservoir Ave is beautiful. People love to walk that neighborhood. So you've got pedestrian traffic going through there. One of the things that I'm concerned about is the truck route used to go right into your business from Reservoir Ave. That has to remain closed off as it is now. The fellow from Thorne Dyke, who did the presentation, we, everybody really liked what he presented and what happened with him.
So, so nothing has actually changed with him. The only thing he's concerned about is what's going to happen with the rest of the property. So, and I can, I can see his concern, but it's, you know, and that's kind of, I don't want him to tie it all up and then say, okay, now we can't do this, we can't do this, you know, maybe do some more residential somewhere else or small business, this and that, because it is business zone. But again, I have absolutely no plans other than what he's submitted and that's on the adjacent piece of property. But I think that instead of me bringing people to the table here, I think it really needs to be some sort of master plan. You know, it's a large enough piece of property where I think the town input and the neighbors' input is very helpful for this. And what does the town want? And that's really what I'm looking for.
Because I think we have to have these, these discussions really need to be held publicly because if not, anything that happens with closed doors, you know, when it comes to town meeting and it's a zoning change, I don't think it's going to go anywhere because it's going to be that question of what happened behind the closed doors. So I think this is the best forum in a public meeting, you know, setting to get the input and, you know, do you have anything else, Noel?
Yes, you know, I was expecting at the last time we heard the Thorne Dyke Company do the presentation, I was looking forward to this spring. The idea is we're going to hear back from them this spring. They don't want to, they want to be welcomed into where they build. And they do nice projects and they do ethical projects and that's what I want to hear more about. The other thing is the piece of land that you were going to sell to him, there's another access and it's very critical that that does not get breached, that we do not have, because it's, even as it is right now, people cut through Harcourt and Reservoir to get to Main Street. I know that they do it and, you know, but we don't need that to be worsened.
Right, and I think that's why I'm here today, because he has talked about possibly doing additional buildings later. And I think that the key is, okay, well, let's find out now what he's thinking. You know, where, you know, where and when and things like that. And I'm a little reluctant to just, you know, give him a catch plan and say, okay, wherever you want to put a later is fine with me, because I don't think that's going to work. And when I spoke with the Town Planner, maybe Serpent could help us out or something like that and come up with just some sort of a plan that we can present here without having a.
But usually the owner would present it rather than, you know, going through Serpent, because, you know, who pays for Serpent's time to do that?
No, and I could, I could present an industrial building there tomorrow. I could present multiple houses, I could present this. What I'm getting at is, what does the town want? I can't speak for the town, I can only speak for.
We can see what other people want.
I have one more thing to say and it's that we do not want another La Baron Hills over there. We don't want Mr. Atani and Simmons or whatever the name of his company is, we don't want that. And I'm telling you, it will really piss people off if that starts happening. But if I were you, I would get hold of that Thorne Dyke construction and start talking with them about it, have them do another presentation, but does that give you, does that give you a pretty well-rounded idea of what we don't want?
No, well, yes or no, I mean, it's 140 some odd acres out there and there's access off of Crooked Lane, different areas to come in and out of the place. So I understand, you know, whether you're talking about reservoir and hack and all that, which I don't think anyone's thinking of using any of those entrances, but there is another way out on Crooked Lane. You know, is it possibly, should something be done on that end and so that way the golf course stays in the middle, maybe something like business? Again, I don't know, but I'm getting to the point where, you know, I've had developers call me, they want to do 300 units. I've had people say, I want to do the 72 units plus another 200 later. And I'm sitting there saying, well, all you can do is present it to the town and see what happens. And it just seems like we're going backwards when we do that. So the question is, what does the town want?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
In my experience, there has been opportunities with the state through mass development where they could hire technical assistants for a situation like this, as long as the property owner would be in agreement and sign and provide a letter of support to the project and have the community work with the developer to determine what's the best use of the site, given the community needs as well as what the developer needs and kind of be that shepherd between, between the conversation, because I think that would probably help both sides.
So it does work? You have to.
It does work, yeah, that could, that could work. That's a possibility. Serpent would not be that avenue, but mass development definitely could provide that kind of support. As long as the property owner is in agreement and the town is in agreement, then that's something that could be worked on together.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea. And that's kind of where I'm heading with this. I have no envisions of what I think it should be. I mean, I've seen some projects that, you know, they have like these big mixed-use development projects and things like that. That can work, but again, I'm not seeing what, I don't have the crystal ball.
I'll tell you, the people that live in that neighborhood love to get their exercise. They like to walk, they like to walk their dogs, their kids like to go sledding down that hill in the winter. It's, it's one of, it's a very special little neighborhood there and people feel very strongly about it, they love it. And we don't want La Baron Hills in there. I'm just, I'm just saying, if I were you, I would contact Thorne Dyke and see what you can get him to. I know it's not, it's not going to generate the kind of money you probably want to get out of that.
It's not about the money. Just so you know, it's not about the money.
Well, it's not about the money for us, because whatever happens there, we have to live with. I just want you to remember that, so thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Noel. Did anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Come on up.
Susan Spiller, I mean, I definitely, 40B, you know, nobody wants 40B there.
Well, I'm not a 40B opponent, because people need a place to live.
Right, I understand that, but how long has 40B been in the state and it's not affordable? And it just pushes SHI away and I would like to see what Thorne Dyke had, you know, proposed, maybe more of those units, senior housing, would still like to see some recreational stay there. I mean, like Noel said, people like to walk there, you know, there aren't many places to do that.
And I agree 100% with what she's saying and that's why the Thorne Dyke thing is only a little piece of it.
Right.
What happens next? So if that happens there and I just don't see the big picture. All I see is this little chunk happening.
So now, let me, so what Thorne Dyke proposed, it was large, you know, multi-floor buildings in a three-acre area, I believe.
Right, so why not spread it out now and not have three stories?
What if, what if it was more like a larger, you know, spread out, one-floor living? I know a lot of feedback is, you know, the older folks that, you know, this is geared towards, I think you might get a better response, especially because you, you know, you got an aging population in Lakeville, people want to stay here. People, people are ready to, you know, downsize so their children can now buy their, move into their house or something, like I've heard, that's a common thing I've heard in town. So if we give people like that are aging a better place to go and maybe they want a little yard where, so they're not just going into these, you know, apartment buildings, because maybe that's going to attract people from the city, not from people locally. And I think we need to think about the people locally. And if you do like a one-floor living or maybe like some that are, you know, duplexes or two floors, but if you have like a variety, I could see, I could see something like what we've looked at almost for like OSRD, being a potential, if you're willing to put aside, you know, half of it is open space.
Well, and that's kind of what I'm thinking. I mean, you know, there's opportunities for fishing and things like that on the property. There's the walk-in, there's things like that, so. But to even have like some help with like a preliminary plan, what works and the golf course can maybe go Executive 18 and move things around this and, you know what I mean? So that's where I kind of am asking for help on that part of it, because I don't want to keep coming back to the board with someone's proposal, which they've always been someone else's proposal, it's never been my proposal. And I'd like to see that big picture, you know, and not just piecemeal this thing together if there's a better way to do it.
You already have a definitive plan that was subdivision that was permitted, is that?
That was a form C, and that was mainly geared so that I could do the entrance over, you know, actually do the entrance over and allow that section to be used for something else off to the left.
Has it been two years? Has it expired yet or no, it's still?
No, it hasn't expired yet, no. And I want, I want, I'd like to start on that fairly soon, you know, but then I, it's like, okay, well, what's, what's next? You know what I mean?
I think, yeah, I mean, if I may, Madam Chair, I mean, you got a real challenge here on your property. And the challenge is going to be water, especially Taunton water allocation. Have you given thought to that?
I have, but I've spoken with DEP as far as getting public, I have my own public water supply. I have wells on site that would actually.
But the wells are not.
I'm already a public water supplier now.
My understanding is the wells aren't good on that site.
Oh, they absolutely are good, believe it or not. But anyways, I've spoken with Jim McGlough and he's the chief engineer for DEP. It's a project, it's, it's a project that can be done. Do I want to do it? Absolutely not. You know, I don't want to maintain my own water. But if you go residential, you do increase the amount of flow, you're going to, what are you going to need? There are, let's just say, small business, something like this, a lot less. So those are the things I have to think about as well. You know, is the allocation from town, can it be increased? Right now I have, I've asked Selectmen to just supply me with a water line to the club itself to get off of that public water supply, because it's a monthly test and just like the Selectmen complained about, would be one of the other places, how it's cumbersome to test it. But those, that's another obstacle that I have to look at, Septics, another one after that.
I mean, I think water allocation is going to be the biggest thing before we even start talking about anything with this development, because if you want housing in there, we know that you're going to need water.
Right.
So I would really focus on that. Because we're going to be going around and around and around.
Yeah, and I don't look at that as being a huge obstacle. Like I said, you know, you, I already have a public water supply. I know the routine, how it has to be tested, you know, how it has to be done. It can be done, it's definitely a lot less expensive than a sewer treatment facility, you know, which is very expensive. So, but these are all things that, maybe we might come up with something that doesn't use a lot of water, who knows?
Did you?
Yeah, Don Gay.
Come up to a mic.
Don Gay, 126 Holland Road. I heard the word, I heard the acronym, OSRD. And I go back to the bylaws. I know that at a recent meeting, it was decided that we weren't going to introduce bylaws at the town meeting for the spring, but I just have a question.
That one, that for consideration for that specific area.
So I just have a question in terms of developers that are interested in land in the Lakeville area. Do the bylaws, are the bylaws a guide for developers who come in? In other words, the town writes the bylaws, this is what an OSRD needs to look like, this is the criteria for an OSRD. If the bylaws aren't finalized, then a developer wouldn't necessarily know exactly what the town is looking for in an OSRD and present a plan that meets the requirements.
So I just threw that out there and I don't want to like.
Nope.
Trigger any sort of, sort of ideas that that's like a consideration at this time? He's mentioning mixed use, maybe, like, so our current mixed-use zone, it needs work. If it were like in good condition, I would say we would look into maybe doing an overlay there, but I think we would have to create a new mixed-use bylaw before that happens, which any, it sounds like anything that we're going to look at for this area would require a bylaw change. And you know, with zoning bylaw changes, it has to go to town meeting and it has to win by a two-thirds majority vote. So that's why I was saying that it should be public discussion so that everyone can be aware of all of the, you know, whatever discussion is being had and the reason for whatever it is that happens going forward. But, I mean, there are different options. OSRD is just housing, you know, but it puts aside open space.
Could you just say what that is, that acronym?
Open Space Residential Development.
Okay.
So, but I assumed you knew.
I did.
Okay, sorry.
The more you learn, the more you know, the more you know, the more you need to learn.
So Madam Chair, to add to that too, nothing could happen, they couldn't propose anything, put an application in until the town had already adopted the bylaw.
Right.
It only works until it's already adopted by the town, which you would be voting for.
And would the AG also have to approve it?
And the AG would have to approve it. It's, it would be risky if they went along before the AG said okay, but the AG would be the final, but you'd have to vote on it first. So you'd get a chance to read the whole thing.
The bylaw.
And it's the bylaw and the way it's written. And there would be criteria embedded in it, an authority, all of the key points that the town would be looking for, how much open space would be required for however many units would be developed, all of that would be written into the bylaw prior to you even seeing it.
And just hearing recently of how much land and space is being looked at. And just hearing recently of how much land and space is being um looked at by outsiders and developers, um, you know, it would just seem that having an OSRD option might be something we want to look into having closer, sooner rather than later.
So that's good feedback, so that's good feedback, because a lot of the feedback that I've gotten has been, we, you know, we don't want it, you know, we'd rather, you know, not go that direction if if the town, because it did go to town meeting and it failed, and then there were reasons that, you know, I myself wasn't on board with it, um, the following time, we were thinking about bringing it to town meeting, I didn't think it was completely done yet, because um originally it had been based off of something from Foxborough, but but, and I don't want to get in the weeds here, because we're here for one specific purpose, but I mean, we can put that on the future agenda, we can continue looking at it, and I think what we would gear it to is what we had talked about is larger parcel areas, instead of any twenty acres, I mean, anything larger, I think, would probably be the most benefit to the town if some if something like that were to be considered.
So I could be a guinea pig.
We could, we could, we could try to put that bylaw back on the table, I don't think it'll make spring, because we're too far, we're too close to that happening, um, but potentially for fall then. If 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 you think that there's, you know, if if some appetite for it, you know? And I know you've been attending a lot of meetings, which I appreciate, so you must, you're you're getting that knowledge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just, I know you, um, the house just walked in, just so you know, we're um, we're just discussing with Derek Maxey, um, options for Lakeville Country Club, he's come here, um, basically wanting to hear what residents want to see in that location, Noel pointed at the Thorndike presentation, said she did want to see something along that those lines, as well as uh maintaining recreational um aspect of the property, Sue sort of echoed that as well, uh, we've talked about water issues, is there anything that you would like to um discuss as far as what you'd like to see there?
No, we were just curious, this all that's going on, and we realized that it wasn't on cable.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, um, anybody else, I know, Dan, you spoke, David, do you have anything that you wanted to ask or add about this discussion?
Uh, no, no, I I it's just kind of interesting listening at this point, uh, I I do think uh, I'd like to have some time to kind of look over what uh, what open space we could uh make work there, uh, and 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 how how a project could work, um, so I would think that it would be uh valuable to first to sit down and 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 look over what some of the options might be, uh, and not keep us too much inside the box, we could, we can kind of get outside of the box with this and see what uh, what other things can possibly be done, uh, especially since it's already zoned business.
Okay. Jack, did you have any questions or comments that you have?
Yes, um, in spite of the problems of the first lady that spoke, I mean, I think multi-story condos apartments for sixty-five and older or whatever, it's just not going to work, I don't think people want that in this, I think we see that down at the properties next to CPAs where they supposedly did put in elevators, so anyways, more importantly, I think we should take a look at this, although people may not like La Baron Hills, they should take a look at the single-story duplex condos there, they are very attractive, they're very well-built, they're very acceptable by over sixty-five, and their value has gone through the roof.
Right, thank you, Jack. Joan, did you have?
Well, yeah, I guess, so, I guess speaking of like what you want to do is to have a discussion, do we do we put it on a future meeting agenda, I guess, and?
I say we could even public hearing, you know, like
That's one of the ones.
Maybe advertise for a public hearing, run it for two weeks so that people really hear about it, and and then you can come back in, and maybe you can, I don't know if, I know you say you don't want to get too far, but if we have something to look at, a map at least, you know, even if you just bring something that you, from the prior subdivision plan, something to look at, um, maybe, maybe that will bring more people in.
Would the board object if I worked with Nancy a little bit first, and then give me a little time?
No, I mean, so
Because she has some great ideas too, which
I don't mind at all, yeah, I think she she brings some great ideas.
And then we'll set a meeting after we kind of put some things together.
No, did you have something else, Noel?
Noel, I just want to say, I hope I haven't heard the last of Thorndike.
I think she likes them.
I know.
I think so.
No, he's a, he's a, it's a wonderful company.
Right.
I'm just concerned about where the additional ones are going to go.
Yep.
And, you know, I just can't say put them wherever you want, I want to, because he's not telling me where he'd like to put them, I'd like to know what he's thinking.
Right, and I know that, just, and I know nobody's really said it tonight, but from what I've heard over the years, I know a lot of people don't want to see any sort of substantial business development there because of the access on Clear Pond Road, you know, that road just isn't
Right.
Capable of handling large businesses, maybe something like, I don't know how, you know, like a coffee, something maybe like a mixed-use type of thing would work for small, like
Small.
Ice cream shop, coffee shop, something that the residents, you know, that maybe will bring people in during, you know, certain times of years.
Yeah, Thorndike about possibly taking the restaurant pro-shop area and just taking that building down, it's fairly old, and maybe do a first three-story building there with first-floor commercial for the golf course, and then second and third floor for more condos. I thought with, because it's a beautiful view right there and kind of keeps the house in, all near the parking and all that, so that was kind of a thought I had come up with. Uh, and he was kind of thinking that would work for him, uh, but again, I don't want to commit to anything until
And that would have to be a specific mixed-use bylaw written for this area.
Correct.
I, so I know with the forty R, it had to be touching the existing forty R, so I'm not sure how we would create a new mixed-use.
An overlay, that would be overlay.
Yeah.
And then I would look around at other communities, I know that there were some renderings and potentially bylaws written for for like um areas around a train station that had both small, like small, more countryfied area look with some some mix of businesses inside that, but it was, they all kind of support each other.
With like a little center, center area, whatever, for people could gather and stuff.
But I think, I think the town is going to want to see a lot of that open space preserve though, too, regardless of what it is, so I think, I think I would like, I would like to see something that, you know, incorporates that as well.
Well, that's where I'd like to leave the golf course, even if I have to reduce it to eighteen, but executive, because we've got a lot of long holes, but we might be able to come in a different way, kind of spread it out a little bit, so they could walk from one side to the other side, you know, because people walk the golf course all the time, and we've always been amenable to that, and sledding and things like that. We can't give them permission, you know how that goes.
Yep.
We just can let them do it.
Yes, Jack. I think, you know, if we have it, we should take a look at the downtown Pine Hills, look at the area.
I just wrote that down.
Commercial area they have in the, you know, the, you know, private shop, restaurants.
And the general store and all that.
I literally just wrote Plymouth Town Live Music.
The whole area down there, take a look, be down there, walk around. I think if that's what we want, take a look at Pine Hills, and God knows Pine Hills has done it right, and they've been very successful.
Right.
Now, you can argue that it's too down in Bay, well, that's another thing, but what they've done in the downtown area, having lived there twelve years, I can say it's worked out very well for the people.
A spa. You could put in a spa.
Yep, thank you, Jack. All right, so do you want to discuss the potential date for a public hearing that we could look at?
Uh, can I get back to you on that?
Sure.
Yeah.
So let us know, give us, obviously, we need at least three weeks' notice.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll let Nancy, I'll bring some plans to her to look at, and then, you know, and then we just kind of go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, Derek.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
Agenda item number four, review the following zoning board of appeals petition, A, Burke, forty-five Howland Road, regarding a special permit and variance for carport improvements. Um, so once again, this is a residential zoning board, um, application, we don't usually make comment, did anybody have anything specific that jumps out at them for this?
This is an existing one there, they're just putting a bigger one in the same spot.
Well, it looks like a second one, is it bigger?
I I think, it looked like they were taking one down and replacing another one up.
That's correct, yes, I'm sure they're they're
A single car.
Replacing, yes.
To a, to a two-car.
Oh, so I saw this, and I thought they were just adding another one.
No, I think they're showing the single and then, but then showing the picture of the second one where they, they're outlining it.
Oh, gotcha.
The red goes beyond the first one, they're kind of centering, that's centered around the new one.
Okay.
It's currently not, um, like paved or anything right now, right?
Mm-mm.
Yeah, so it's just going to be a carport?
Mm-hmm.
So, anyone have a comment here? All right, so would you like to make a motion to send no comment?
Yep, I'll make a motion to send no comment to the zoning board of appeals for forty-five Howland Road.
Second?
We have a motion and a second.
Cabral, aye.
McCaffrey, aye.
Willga, aye.
All right, agenda item number five, planning board goals, uh, we do have in our packet a nice printout here of our goals, and Nancy has added on, we actually have two of them, because the first one didn't have the comments, but then Nancy did add on comments, so we have some comments from January, February, and then March, which is great, so we can kind of keep track of them.
Just keep a running tab of
Because I was kind of running out of, like, I was deleting and just updating in that little area, trying to keep it to one, but no need if we can just
It's an evolving spreadsheet.
Exactly. Um, I don't think we have to go item by item right now, do you want to, are there any that you wanted to maybe?
So where you had, uh, because number uh one and two, I would just combine them and then put them as ongoing, because those are items that will continue
Always be.
And always be, because you're basing it on the rest of the work and and the goals. And then number three is the uh, the current zoning map, um, that we did note that there is missing on the on the map, the flood plain, the Water Resource Protection District, and the Marijuana Overlay District, so I was able to contact Bridgewater State University, and uh, I gave them a proposal, they sent it out to their students, and I had a student reach back out to me and within ten minutes. And he had this work done since, since just a month, and and now you have a map that has all the layers on it, including the water resource area, which covers the whole map, which constantly gets forgotten about in all of the applications that I've seen. Of course, we put a disclaimer on there that this is for planning purposes only, that this is not accurate, and more work would need to be done to ensure the accuracy of the map, but it does give you the the the
Brought-to-back.
Area to, for playing, for your purposes, so I'm I'm very excited, he was lovely to work with, and I'm going to give him a recommendation so that when he goes to look for a job, um, that he'll be able to take that with him from the town of Lakeville with the map, so.
And how, and I think this is just, it was, it was almost like what we did with the rules and regulations, you know, we took like the easy, the low hanging fruit, we updated that, and now here we have Serpide's going to do a deep dive into it this year, hopefully we'll get that done, but at least this is, this is a lot cleaner, easier to look at, um
And everything's on.
Yeah, it's great, um, could we, could we post this to planning?
So, so there has been some hesitance from the the zoning enforcement officer because it's not accurate, I understand where his concerns are, there would be further work that would need to be done, he doesn't want to lead people in the wrong direction should they wish to do a project and then make a determination based off of the map that we've provided, but we now have it in the planning office, you will each have a copy for your purposes, anybody could come into the office and and get a printout, um, and also, the assessors are also using it in their office as well, so there is a purpose, and everyone who needs it has it, but if anybody would want a copy, certainly we would be happy to provide it if they were interested.
And, but this is no different really than, like, the errors on our existing map are no different than these errors, is correct, so it's really not worth, it's it's still an improvement.
Yeah.
So.
So I guess that would be up to the planning board to decide if you wanted to put it on the website, on the planning board website.
I mean, I just feel like
It has the disclaimer on it, so
I mean, if you're handing out, sorry, if you're handing out copies of this all already, and people, and who was it, the assessors already using it?
Assessors, yeah.
I mean, I would put it on the website, um, until
Yeah, I mean, just on the planning, if it's on the planning
On the planning website, yeah.
Page, that way, you know, I feel like it's kind of getting wasted if it's not available publicly, especially when you look at our current zoning map, it's so different, you can't see the streets, you have to compare it to another map, this is great, this is this is much clearer.
I hope at some point that you get it up onto Excess, right, so that anybody who is going to look at a parcel, as they do click on the other attributes like wetlands or natural heritage or any of those items, that zoning would be an option, um, but we're just not there yet.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
But let's keep this on here for our goal, because we still want to do that deep dive like we talked about.
Absolutely, that sounds great.
But this is, you know, like we did with the rules and regs.
Right.
You know, like cleaning it up a little.
Right, thank you.
You bet, are you kidding?
And thanks to the gentleman from
Mikey, um, uh
Could you
Remember his last name?
Would you be
Thank you.
Warto?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I mean, I I think the sport should send a thank you note to him, um, from all of us, I I would like to, you know, either personally write one or or something, just thanking him, because I think that's a
That'd be so lovely, I I love that idea.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to to help you with that.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, he's very sweet, he has, um, you know, he's a student, and he's he's paying his own way, and he's working, and that's a, that's a lot, and he picked this up like like that and
Awesome.
Put it together, so.
What is he going into?
Mapping?
Right.
Okay, we need his contact information for the online one.
I definitely want to get that contact, because we need to map that buildable land area.
And I do have that, that is, that would be the next, so yeah, I stopped
That's number four.
The zoning, and I thought it was all done, but yeah, that was the next one that they, um, that maybe Bridgewater would be that that group that would want to take that on, and we could put a proposal together, um, for them to consider that, as it, this is the end of year, so seniors are looking for projects to highlight for themselves.
Okay.
So, let me reach out to the the professor.
Thank you again, Nancy
Absolutely.
For your help with this and everything.
Yeah.
We appreciate it.
This is fun, this is stuff I love, yeah.
No, honestly.
And putting those pieces together and having a student be involved, that just makes me really happy to help him, too.
Awesome.
Yep, uh, we had the use chart, which didn't really carry over, we didn't work on that, the senior housing, you just heard from the developers, so we're still moving along on that, the rules and regs, um, are still ongoing with Serpide, they're supposed to have a, um, their first meeting, the kickoff meeting for the rules and regs shortly, so I'm I'm thinking sometime in April, that should probably be happening, and Kathy is revising the updated versions already, so that should be be ready for the, um, for the website soon and for everyone's uses. Um, I don't know, do you want to talk about the joint meeting thoughts?
Oh, yeah, so maybe even
Because that's on here, too.
So
Even though you have it later in the agenda as well.
Right, right, but so, yeah, number eight is hold one combined meeting with CPA and CONCOM, but something I wanted to talk about was having like a quarterly joint meeting and open it up to any boards, committees, commissions that want to attend.
Yep.
Um, and and target, and I would even, if if you're all amenable, I would even offer, you know, whether it's the first or, no, second or fourth, um, Thursday, maybe start a meeting at like six?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And just come an hour earlier and have like an, and like, let's not get it too And just come an hour earlier and have like an, and like, let's not get it too long or anything, but just, you know, have it maybe, the goal is just an hour, no more, and but just discuss whatever.
Before our meeting, so we'd have to, yeah, we'd have to have enough time.
So, well, it wouldn't be adding another day.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine for that, yeah.
But maybe, um, just starting a little earlier to try to address.
Yep.
You know, like get a joint meeting and, and obviously not everybody has to, you know, if you can't make it or, or, you know, just one representative or some, but something to get everybody in the same room. I think that was some good feedback we had gotten.
Yeah.
From the joint meetings.
Communication is key, you know, so.
It's amazing how much overlap you'll find, um, for many different topics that come along. You know, generally like big things too, like your master plan or hazard mitigation plan or anything that you're working on planning wise is a good topic. And then sometimes developments cross over all the different departments and it's an opportunity for you to talk about them collectively as a group.
Um, Nancy, would you be willing to send out that email and, and actually should we, do you want to?
Start it?
It's later on in, in, well, well, I guess we'll discuss it again when it comes, because that's under possible vote. This is just goals.
Right.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just keep moving through the goals for now.
Yep.
Um.
Um, and then the master plan was to have a meeting on the twelfth, uh, the, the master plan implementation committee. I mean, as, but they had to postpone it, it will be next week on the eighteenth.
Okay.
And then the stormwater, um, bylaw was at the select board meeting, um, on Monday night. And, and then it's now before you, this later in the agenda.
Excellent, moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I think we haven't really touched on any of these other ones. I think I mentioned it a little while ago, remove and redo mixed use. I think that's something potentially.
That might be something that you add to like the, you know, the April, you know, try to see what that looks like.
Okay.
Maybe take a look at what it is now and what's, what, what you don't like about it. That would be like the first step.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is monthly updates from Serpids rep. David, um, do you have any Serpids updates? To report?
You muted?
David, you still?
There, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I had it on mute and then I just started talking. Uh, no, since I've been gone for the month, uh, I'm kind of a little, a little out of the loop at this point, but, uh, I'll be back, uh, I'll be back on Monday, so I'll, I'll be back digging into what's, what's going on.
Sounds good. All right, anything else on goals right now?
I think that's it.
Perfect, yeah.
Do you have any new goals?
Um, I, I'm hesitant to add anything right now because we have a lot going on, so.
Full table now.
Okay. We'll work on what we have for now. Uh, agenda item number six, administrative update, possible votes. So this one, Nancy, do you want to take this next one? It's ADU accessory bylaw update.
Sure, sure. Um, so that went to, um, um, the accessory dwelling unit, which is one, two hundred and seventy dash two point one in the bylaws, went to legal counsel for review because you were adding a number four to that line. And we wrote is subject to seven sixty CMR seventy one point oh oh protected use ADUs. And she did not have any, any comments on that, so I'm assuming she felt that that would be, that language would be fine to carry forward. And the same with the removal of two seventy dash seven point eight, which is accessory apartment. And that was to delete the zoning bylaw in its entirety, and she didn't have any issues with that.
Okay.
And that makes sense because I think we did talk to her about that and that was a consideration.
Yeah, so I think that, that's easily something that could go forward to the select board for, to be added to the warrant and, and their approval.
Right.
All right.
So. Also the quant, the comments, do you want to quantify this on under eight?
Correct. So under the site plan review, which is, um, two seventy.
Oh, is this site plan review? Oh, I'm thinking that it was the.
The first page is site plan review.
Yeah.
All right, never mind.
Yeah, the first and second page cover all of site plan review and then the ADU is on the, the third page.
And so that's all to the ADU? It's just literally just adding.
The subject, yeah, seven sixty, seventy one protected.
Okay, so just adding that and then deleting accessory in, in the full. Okay, so that's that.
And so I made note, like blue is, was already approved at the fall town meeting in twenty twenty four. So people know that this is, this is all, was all new.
Right.
Yeah.
Still.
Right, oh, and just.
Did you have that at the?
We do have in our packet also, um, so even though it was, um, approved at town meeting, so we got back from the attorney general, articles fifteen and seventeen, um, we will return the approved map to you by regular mail. Articles, um, you know, so they approved the articles fifteen and seventeen. Um, the map amendments related to article fifteen from November twelfth.
They're extending it to the four days sixteen.
The articles sixteen and eighteen, which were ADU and accessory structure. They did, um, extend.
Continued, yeah.
The date for their review to April seventeenth. They didn't say that they didn't approve it, they didn't give us any other feedback, just that they're extending that review period.
So that would have to remain in blue until it had fully been approved and we, I don't know, maybe, I don't think they'll deny it because it just is.
It's their language.
It's their language, so I can't envision that, but I can't, can't know what they're thinking. So, um, so the site plan review, um, two seventy dash six point seven, section C and applicability. We looked at, I took another, we took another look at number two. And you might wish to change the floor area to seven hundred square feet as one thousand five hundred square feet seems awful large. And you might want to have that triggered sooner under a smaller amount of the floor area, floor area. The, uh, the coverage of the lot, one thousand five, you know, five hundred square feet would be fine to keep, but maybe just address that if you wish to, to lower that number.
For the floor area?
For the floor area.
Okay.
Um, that was me, that legal counsel did not mention that at all. So, and then where you see A E K two on the next one, the external modification for construction. She just wanted to know if you wanted to, um, have like an amount, an increase of, of square footage or change in the parking or traffic configuration. Um, and then I said, well, this might be so similar to number two, they could remove this as it may already be covered under number two.
Gotcha, okay, that makes sense.
As these were in the red were all additional ones that we had had it from a previous meeting.
Yep.
So these haven't been accepted yet.
I wonder if the fifteen hundred square feet, if it should be lower, but if, if there should be like a percentage or, or percentage, right? I'm saying like fifteen hundred square feet and a hundred fifty thousand square foot.
Yep.
It's nothing, but.
Right, right.
Right.
You know, if someone's, if it's already only a three thousand square foot space and they're running, I mean, they're never gonna get triggered because they're never gonna run it, they're gonna never add, add to percent, but sure to be like a, a ten percent or like a, you know, like a fifteen hundred square or ten percent, you know what I mean, kind of, or like a percentage of something.
Right.
They're adding on more than a certain percent.
No, I hear what you're saying. Because I mean, even if it is a large building, if they're adding fifteen hundred square feet and maybe that's all offices, so then we do want to look at the parking to make sure that the parking is sufficient for those additional people that are gonna come into offices.
Right, well, exactly, if you're trying to sort of foot of, of business and of.
You don't have to change, you don't have to change the square footage, it was just a suggestion. And then the, the part two would be, do you want to remove number eight and keep, just keep it as number two because it's so similar?
Yeah, but yeah, but we also, but I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, John.
The goal with yours was that we also have, if you're changing the occupant level by one ten percent.
Right.
That gets triggered anyway, so I'm just, I'm saying if they're adding, but for them to add like fifteen hundred square foot of like mechanical space just because they're adding like, you know, some piece of equipment that they don't want inside the building or outside the building.
Right.
That's why I thought of doing this. Um, I don't mind, I don't mind lowering it, like a thousand, maybe like a thousand square feet and fifteen hundred, something like that. So it's not the same, but, because I guess if you're, if you're an aggregate or disturbance of lot coverage, you're both fifteen hundred square feet, which would be the same anyways, it's kind of one and the same because you're still.
Yeah, because the in, the in aggregate captures it if they try to break it up to avoid the bylaw.
Yeah.
Um. I'm just, I'm kind of just reading over this number eight just to see like, because I, I know we had talked about capturing things that are not necessarily a new building, but if they're building like an outbuilding or a parking lot or.
Changing the dumpster.
Yeah.
Lower it. Which is part of our study plan, I would do, right?
And that's where you.
Yeah, that was, they put a dumpster like, you know, where the snow, where the snow's supposed to go. You know what I mean?
Right.
No, I'm saying, but yeah, I don't know if we have to, want to take it. Propose involves external modification.
I'm just thinking, do we want to just quantify it the same way?
Yeah.
Or, but, I mean, it does kind of get captured, it should get captured.
Not.
But there, like if we're seeing a lot disturbance, but if they're, the problem is if they're not submitting for the site plan review, like.
No, because if, they may not be disturbing anything if they're building something on their existing lot necessarily.
I think maybe we could take out eight because ten kind of covers it. But once again, the same comment is quantify. And I like what Nancy suggests, there are any expansion or new parking areas for five or more parking spots. Like that's.
It covers that, that parking.
That's pretty good and that's what they're, they're what, twenty feet wide? So five times one, just like a hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not good in back of my head, that's why I did your planning.
Hundred sixty square feet.
Yeah, so if we could, I, okay, so if, if y'all are in agreement, take out eight, remove eight, but then add to ten, the quantify of five or more parking spots. That's pretty specific.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. I think that's good.
Perfect.
So, so what are you gonna do for ten?
Any expansion or new parking areas for five or?
Five or more parking?
Expansion or new parking areas?
Could be expansion, enlarge or lo, you know, any expansion or enlargement of new.
Oh, new areas for five or more parking spots.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that simplifies it.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
And then I'm just thinking, looking at this number eleven again, because we were talking about exceeding assessed. Yeah, that's like if it's increasing the, yeah, I, I think that's a good one. I mean, is it, is it left up their interpretation though, like is that?
Color permit.
Or no? I'm, I guess I'm trying to picture when a scenario that it would be applicable or that.
So if you had. Cumulative permits values, that one would be hard, I mean.
I don't want to create something that's really subjective and then it's not going to be useful or that people might pick apart at town meeting and I don't have a good.
Right, answer for.
Rebuttal as to why we're bringing it.
I mean, what, what would that be like? It's like, you know, it's kind of like almost the idea of like where we say like if you're getting like a new sign, you have to go through site plan review. You know, I mean, oh, you have to go to that, you know, your sign because you're changing the business name and stuff like that. But that'd be the only time, right? If someone was completely swapping their business out and, and gutting it and renovating it, right? Like where it wouldn't be. That'd be the only time that you would actually have fifty percent of the current assessed value, there's no web property.
And it would probably be captured by many of the other, um, triggers that you already have.
Do you think it is?
Like a change in occupancy, even though they may not have changed, of an existing structure occupied by a business or industrial, which increases the previously approved occupant load, I mean, like I said, where.
So is it redundant, you think? Is it, is it not capturing something?
What you want? I don't think it, I, I think it could probably be deleted, especially if.
I mean, I liked it because it was different.
Right, right, it's kind of, it kind of falls into like, number four will kind of cover that. You're just saying like, I don't know what they would, I don't know what they would be doing, even if you were revamping, I don't.
Yeah, especially looking at property values nowadays, that's a huge undertaking. So that, it would trigger something else, I think. Right, so we could scratch eleven?
Like where would, yeah, where would you, like you said, like where would you have a, oh, yes? Is this for like, this is more, we'd be like for business, right? It wouldn't be like a residential, right? So again, what's, like, I'm trying to think of a building where it's called a million dollars, they're gonna spend, they're gonna do a permanent value worth of a million dollars, you know what I mean, something like that.
Right.
Where they would, they wouldn't be doing one of the other things above, right? Like a change in use of an existing structure to bid, to a business or industrial use. New construction, modification, addition, or residential structure.
I guess I, I think nine and ten are pretty, they're, I'd like to think that they'll capture what we may be missing.
Right.
As long as, so I don't want it to be just specific to park, like five parking spaces, but enlargement, expansion, such, such as building addition or parking lot expansion.
Of five spaces or more?
But I think we do have to quantify it, but the quantify is kind of up here, enlargement, expansion. So maybe we do need one that.
Well, she, she, she says, do you want to qual, you know, quantify it?
Right.
Do you have to quantify it? She doesn't say you have to quantify it, she just asks if you want to quantify it.
Change in parking slash traffic.
And that would mean like, if you're even enlarging it like two, one, two spaces, then you would come in for site plan review. Do you want that? Like if somebody is just adding two more spots.
So maybe, so what if enlargement slash expansion, such as building an addition or parking lot expansion?
So doesn't, doesn't, wouldn't?
Change.
Wouldn't number ten be covered in number nine? Well, I guess not if they're only, if they're only changing a parking spot.
Right.
But why, why would they be adding parking spots?
Right, that's why they would have to come to site plan review because they're, if they're changing parking.
If they propose involves expansion of a building or.
So is number nine enough? Is number nine good enough? Does that cover it?
If it changes the traffic volume and patterns in area, noise, parking, lighting, et cetera. Expansion of a building.
I guess it's a lot easier to present a town meeting, we're just adding this one.
Right.
That would result in a change in traffic.
You do have to think like that though, don't you? You do, because the laws, yeah.
Some of the, yeah, some of them will get hung up on something and then they blow it down because of one thing where.
Exactly.
Because they're watching the, the door, the wall crumbles.
Yeah.
Um, so, so yeah, I mean, do we need to? Expansion of a building or intensification of use that would result in a change in traffic volume of patterns in the area, noise, parking, lighting, et cetera. I mean, it's pretty broad.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, it covers, I mean, you have the, the building and the intense, you know, intense use. So that's really why someone would add more parking, right? Because of the, the use is changed and they need more parking to meet that requirement.
Noise, parking, lighting, et cetera. Right, yeah, so if all of a sudden now they have like these big spotlights that are not dark sky compliant, then at least.
Yeah.
Okay, so just cut it back to.
Want to winnow down to nine?
Nine?
Yeah.
Do we have to add anything except for our single family or duplex housing or something like that? I'm just looking at the, what was, what was written in number eight, right? Where we're excluding single family or duplex housing, like we're not asking them to come back for that.
Well, you could add by a business or industrial use, then that clarifies it that it's not residential.
Yes, perfect. By business.
Kind of similar to what we did above where it's like a change in use for a business or industrial use.
Okay.
Yeah, most people, yeah, we don't have to.
Right.
Okay.
And we'll drop ten.
Okay.
Mm hmm, ten and eleven?
Ten and eleven, yep, and eight. And, and drop one thousand five hundred in number two to one thousand, is that?
Or do you guys want to keep it down?
Just want to keep it. It's not, it's not a big deal.
You never know. You never know.
This is Lakeville, um.
I think it's okay.
Yeah.
I guess. I guess. And then the activity is not subject to site plan review, proposals that involve no change in use or level act of activity. Internal building modifications to a non-residential use that do not affect the scale or impact of the existing use. Uh, a reuse of a premise for which site plan review has already been conducted, provided the new use is not different in any type or impact, and those are all basically given, it's just now stating it. So it's clear to people who are applying that, okay, no, you don't have to apply.
Right.
And so under review procedure, one, application, a building permit may be subject to section two seventy dash six point three C, site plan review. The applicant shall submit an original application, one copy of the application, a butters list, fees, fourteen copies of site plan, any supporting documentation and electronic copy as described herein to. The planning department, the planning department shall distribute the plans, application and supporting documents to the following departments. And we have fire, police, board of health, conservation, DPW, building department, town planner, open space committee and select board, so that's good, that captures open space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which they had been taken out, prior to submitting a site plan, the applicant shall meet informally with a technical review committee, consisting of the following. So.
So, the, um, the legal counsel mentioned that the town planner was not mentioned in the list.
Oh, that's funny, so you had to add it?
Of course.
So now this? Technical review committee. I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
Do, I'm just hoping that everybody's on board, and so like, who arranges it? Now the planning department will have to arrange it.
Arrange it, they'd set up the date, um, you could do.
So basically, if, instead of Kathy just sending out, do you have comments on this plan, she would be like?
Inviting them to a meeting.
Do you have, yeah, okay.
With the developer, they provide the, the set of plans in advance that they would be reviewing and looking at. Then they meet with the developer to discuss any issues that they would have prior to. So, fire department would be able to suss out any of the issues with the sprinklers, the, the ability to get around all four sides of the building with his apparatus. Bill, uh, board of health would be able to know any issues with what, it falls under his purview. And sometimes, building will have a few items to add about his zoning enforcement and where that would fall on their idea for their plan. Um, each one of them has, has a, their own expertise that they can bring to the table.
Right, and that's even like he's, he brought, Dan brought up with the water, because that's select board, so like they would have a chance to chime in about saying water allocation if there's a concern.
And with the select board having the stormwater authority as well.
That's true.
Then, that makes it more important for them to have a seat, someone to have a seat at the table before it gets to them.
Yeah.
And then that gives you that cohesiveness, that these things have been sussed out by your team.
Yeah.
Frank may have issues with, you know, with how the drainage is going out onto the road, like, he knows the roadway's best, he knows that, how the slopes would be on that site and where his trigger points would be. And he could be able to bring that to the table in advance, before it gets too far down the line and have them fix it. It's actually ends up being a savings to the developer because they.
Right.
Don't go too far into their plans before the, for the town can really weigh in on it. So it's.
It's a time saver.
Both sides, yeah, yeah.
Before things.
But it doesn't allude the fact that we have to continue to keep all of these groups involved throughout the whole permitting process, so when plans change, when they revise them. We want to make sure that we're giving them back to them to make sure that the revisions didn't exclude something that they thought were invaluable, because I've gotten that feedback before too, like.
Yeah.
Changed for the worse, instead of the better.
Our opinion and then they changed it, and then they voted on something we didn't, we didn't have said, so just making sure.
Similar to when, he's like, well, you already looked at these elevations, like, and submitted them.
Right.
Um, so, my one comment on, on that, that line there, so prior to submitting a site plan. An applicant shall meet informally with a technical review committee consisting of the following. So what, so what is the recourse if, let's say, the conservation commission's like, no, I don't want to meet with them? So are they not, are they not allowed to submit a site plan if they're saying that you have to meet with the technical committee?
That's true, yeah.
Or should it be that, that, that they should, well, no, prior to submitting a site plan, an applicant, um. I want to say.
Still have the opportunity?
Well, shall, shall, shall meet, if, if requested, shall meet. I mean, I, I almost, to the effect, to the effect that if, if, if one of these committees waives their right to this meeting, it, it shouldn't hold them up from submitting a site plan review. Like, they shall be, if, if requested, or something to, just something to the thing where it leaves them out if, if. Again, if the, if someone, if the select board's like, I don't, I don't want to look at this.
Departments don't have any, they don't have anything like a plan, they don't, they don't need it to comment.
If, if the fire department says, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna look at their stuff, I want to see it after they go, they perform the site plan review.
Right.
And they submit it, they should have that out, but if, if required, I, I, I understand the point of it, but we could set up all these meetings and. DPW is like, no, and then, then we're now we're stuck because it's in writing that you have to have this done, that's why I'm just wondering, and I don't know if that's a legal issue of, you're saying that it's, it's a prerequisite, but if you don't get that prerequisite done, are you able to move to the next step? And so now we're just, it's like a stalemate of going back and forth.
Do we want to just change it to May, or is that too lenient? Or do we want it to be shall?
Yeah, because if you go May, then they'll, they could just skip the process altogether. I mean, and maybe. Maybe that's not a terrible thing, if they feel like they're in good shape, but there should be like, if you don't, then, that, maybe the, the, the top captures it because they already, have already had to pass it out to all of those. Anyway, and as long as we know that the tech review didn't happen, we can make sure that, as the planning department would make sure that the. The, the plans were given to all the departments so they have opportunity to comment.
Right, I just don't know, yeah.
It could be May.
Well, no, but you mean, the prior to submitting it, a site plan, an applicant shall meet, shall meet informally, if requested, with, with, something to that effect, where, and then down the bottom in your caveat there, that the purpose of this, you know what I mean, like?
Yep.
You could say, you know, you know. Each technical review committee, um, department, you know, shall waive that, waive this right, you know, I mean, something to that effect, where if they waive their right, that's fine, and he can go, but, you know, if requested, almost like if, if. Again, I'm sure it's gonna, I'm sure it's gonna be piece by piece where it's like, some of these, like the fire department and the police department would love to talk to, before they even.
Right.
Get, get their feet, you know, start going on this big project, again, like, maybe with. Some of the bigger developers, they would have liked to like get in there beforehand so that we're not spinning our wheels later, but I just.
Yeah, I, I think that's a, that's a good point, and we can.
Maybe, I don't, maybe ask her if she, yeah, if, if legal counsel, she has a, I don't know, like, does it hold us, does it hold us to it? If it doesn't hold us, then it's fine, but the word shall always means you have to do it.
Exactly, good catch.
Yeah.
So I don't, yeah, I don't know if the word may just makes sense, or if there is some other language that should be.
Or should, I don't know.
Yeah.
How is the difference in code? Well, code, shall is required, you have to do it, or should is kind of like.
Should.
I don't know, but should, but I don't know, again, it's, I read enough code, but I don't write it, so I don't. I don't, uh, no, but I just.
I could do a quick, you know, because I could send this to her, I also feel like the stormwater bylaw needs to go back to legal counsel, now that.
Just a few changes.
They've made some changes, some are kind of significant with the tickets and, you know, things like that, so I want to make sure that she, she has a pass over that, so I can, I can tag this and.
Even if you have like just a quick call with her, maybe, just to kind of, like.
Yeah, you still have your placeholder, your, your public meeting won't be till April tenth, right? So you still have time to wordsmith this, so there's no pressure, you're still in good shape. All right?
All right.
Yeah, and this should be wordsmithed so that, that it works.
Site plan review is going to council for a question. One question.
Yep.
Stormwater council, final. Review. Edits. Um, did we want to look through the stormwater? Is this anything that we should?
She did, um, flag, I don't see her comments on here, I thought I had used that. I didn't bring it.
Your comments, right?
Do you have the one with both comments? Yes, so she flagged an item.
She S, S S three?
Uh, no, that's, that would be.
Oh, select, that's serpent.
That's serpent.
Okay.
So.
I see yours.
She would be, um, where it talks about going on the property, I think it's under. Enforcement, she clearly said that that's, unless they give us written permission, that that's not allowed, and I somehow did not get the.
Hope it's not on.
I didn't get the comments one.
Do you have it? Which one?
Yeah, there's nothing on.
The stormwater.
Yeah, yeah, mine's black and white, that's why you wasn't coloring it, I was with the wrong one.
Okay.
It's not black and white, but your, you're just looking at a different color.
Gotcha.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the right one.
You got the grayscale.
Yeah, it's green and red, but blue looks different, that's why I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the right one.
Weird, how'd that happen? So, if you, I mean, if you want to just talk to her about.
Yeah.
That too, then?
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, there is a, uh, I can create a form for people to, to sign for the select board agent or peer reviewer to go. That would happen at the point of application. We could do that, and then that covers anyone being able to access the property, which, you're gonna need, they're gonna need to access the property to be able to review. The property for the stormwater to make sure that the slopes and things like that are kind of in jive, so.
Okay.
It might be that we can.
Create a form?
I can create the form that they sign, right off the beginning when they file for anything under the stormwater. Then, they, that would trigger that responsibility, would be off of us and, and be held by the applicant. If they wanted to file, then part of that filing would mean that you have to allow people on your property.
Right. Okay. So, we did talk about public hearing schedule, date, um, we're looking at, oh my lord, April fourteenth, is it? Ten?
April tenth.
Okay, so. We don't need to send these officially to the select board yet. We can.
You can wait, right? Till after the March twenty seventh, and I think you'll have finals.
Oh, so on March, so on our next meeting, we'll have the finals, then we can send it over to the select board officially, and then we'll, we have the public hearing date for April tenth. And. That should be good.
The time frame, let me check the times, I'm starting to get a little worried.
Oh, why?
I'm just gonna check the times, and I'll get back to you tomorrow, because I, I always get a little concerned about.
I think it was April fourteenth is the date that it closes.
Right.
Yeah, that's what it was.
So that would make it, right?
Yeah, so as long as we send it to the, you know, officially on the tenth.
Right.
No, that's a public hearing, so as long as.
By March twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty eighth, they would have it.
Yeah, we're fine then.
You're fine, okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Good.
Oh, so Fri- Friday, the twenty eighth, okay, no, 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 I know, I know.
The days, the, the ages are always very, very stringent, you don't, you don't miss them.
There's too much going on, that's what it is, you know?
All right, so.
All right.
Interdepartmental meeting is the next item here, under administrative. But there is something, I think, I don't know if you want to say it, or if you want me to say it, but, because it's kind of tied to this, in my opinion.
Okay.
So, and, do you want me to say it?
Sure.
So unfortunately, we did get, um, we're losing Nancy Darby, our wonderful planner, we did get notice today that she, you know, she let us know officially. Um. Which is devastating, because you've been so wonderful, and thank you for, you've done so much in such a short time.
I appreciate you allowing me to do so much for you. It's been equal, equal enjoyment, I have enjoyed working for you as well.
So I was, I was, I had very negative attitude towards this whole planner thing, and you have changed that. And I'm very, I'm very, like, so now, but I'm still, I'm very, I'm skeptical and scared about what we could end up with. So because of that, for this next item, which is this interdepartmental meetings. I'm just hesitant, because I don't know what we're gonna end up with, um, in your position, and just, I don't want to see. Bad representation, or like someone who maybe.
Who's gonna have the best interests in mind for the town.
Who might not be listening to the feedback, I felt like you were very good and very receptive, listening to the feedback, I felt confident that you had a good handle on what Lakeville is looking for. And that, like, that made, made me very confident with you taking this, I know I had already expressed my concern about the interdepartment, because like, I don't know about these offline conversations, so I do, I return to that concern. Now, at this point, so I think, I would like to see, instead of interdepartmental meetings, I would like to see the quarterly. Um.
Yep.
Joint meetings.
Mm-hmm.
Just, so if we could. If you don't mind sending a memo out and asking, you know, the planning board has discussed, we can take a vote on it, if you guys want, um, and we're offering either the second or fourth. Thursday in the month at six P M, to have a, you know, limit it to an hour.
Yep.
Um, but to get any interested departments, committees, commissions in, involved, so, um. Even if it's just a representative of each.
I do, I like it.
So, obviously, we'd have to hold it at the library or somewhere bigger on those evenings.
I think that would be wonderful for the town to implement, I think it's an opportunity, like you said, communication is key. For, for everything that you do.
Absolutely.
Being able to communicate with, with everyone, not be in our silos, you know, just keep like running ahead. Um, it offers, offers you maybe some opportunity to plan the community together. Before things happen to you.
So, so instead of interdepartmental meeting, it'll be quarterly, so like March, June, September, December, um. Quarterly joint, and you're gonna send out a memo.
Yep.
Do you want us, uh, it does say possible votes, would, would we like to take a vote, to make it official? The planning board has voted, are you on board? John, you look.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. No, we're, we're a little bit, uh.
I know.
Yeah. And, uh. Yeah, no, no, I'm good, uh, no, I think that'll be, that's good, I think that's good, the quarterly one, so, no, I was thinking, if we, so if we had it at the, we'd have to have it at the library, so we'd have to have our meeting at the library that day too, because there's no way we're gonna get out of there and over to here.
Right, right.
Especially if.
So, yeah.
Some of them, we open the mic up to some of them, and they'll be going for a while.
You could see what the interest is too, you may still be able to have it here and just reorganize it a little.
No, we, we've done it here before, we did it for the, for the December, the December twenty sixth one, and.
And then when you know you have a hot topic, you move it to a bigger venue.
Yeah, I still know, well, yeah, if, if, and it'll be open to the public, obviously, so I, I don't know how.
Could do it for the first meeting.
It doesn't, it doesn't have.
Still goes right.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be public input, though, because if it's, if it's already a lot of people listening.
Meeting, but it's not, yeah, when it's not a public hearing, it's just, yeah, it's just, yeah.
Right, but at least, you know, even, maybe we don't have a lot of topics, and it's a quick one, maybe we have five, maybe, maybe the first one's gonna be, you know, like, just like an exploration to see who's actually interested.
You'll have to remember which, which meeting place you're going to on that, right? Let me warn you.
Oh, it's happened before.
I swear to God, I thought it was.
Yep.
Just saying. But you'll figure it out, you know, if they're not here, they're just over there.
Yeah. Um, how about Pine Crest Village? Did you have an update?
Yeah, so, um, we did receive a, a complaint from a, an abutting neighbor of the project. The developer did go out and create the, um, the rumble strip.
Yep.
And fixed whatever issues that neighbor had had with some previous work that had been done, so, um.
And was the neighbor?
And the neighbor seems to, he, I didn't hear back, so I'm assuming he's okay.
I took a drive up there.
Yeah.
It looked pretty good.
I, 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 I received the pictures.
Yeah.
From them, that, that they were out there the next day, because it was good, they were, they were, they were happy about that.
See what she's got, that, see what, see what's just, having that good communication and that state.
Are you absolutely sure? Are you?
Um, then we also have a thirteen Main Street update.
Right, so, um, this week, what day? Tuesday, Tuesday, I think it was, went out with, um, the owner, um, their engineer, which is Zenith.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Apex, to take a look at the site. We had the plans with us, the as-built and the original plans that were signed by the board. She had already done a preview review of, of both plans, so she had questions, they were answered, we walked the entire sites, looked at the, the drainage, the, the size of the piping. The, the screening, um, the slopes, and, um, the drainage basin, there were a few questions, well, we asked. There were a few questions, well, we asked for the border health as built and he's going to shoot some grades on the actual drainage to make sure that the outflow of the drainage is actually at the right height, so that the water can actually leave the basin. Did ask him if it, you know, has he seen it in a rain event? How is it working? He said, seems to be working fine. Um, only concerns I had were the slopes on the sides of the property, cause it really drops off there. Should be, um, better, uh, better control, erosion control measures. Put in some vegetation or stones or something.
Something to slow it down a little bit.
Yeah, cause they're very steep slopes and then they're, they'll just erode.
On each side of the.
Yeah, on the backside.
On the backside.
Yeah. Yeah. But you, yeah, it's a, a view up there, it's pretty.
Good.
Yeah, but it's very nice and we should have a peer review report from Apex, which they can respond to. Um, just like you do with anything else, but yeah, that, that backside construction going forward will be really important, um, as well. And that, that's easily can, can be continued. As you write, I, I can give you the language to write it right in the decision. You do that pre-construction meeting onsite, you have, you know, highway. They're, your engineer, their engineer, everybody's on the same page. They know that they're supposed to contact the planning department when they need an inspection. They're contacted, uh, Apex would be contacted, they go out, they do the inspection, they write the report, they give it back to the planning board so that you know what's going on throughout the whole backside of the project when it's being developed.
Okay.
You've been great, Nancy, you've been great. Um, next thing, new business A and R application, we do have in our packet.
So this is much.
Oh, the only thing I did see.
Oh, Joe, did you, oh, not again.
It's still there.
No, it's not.
Or maybe I started.
Yeah, I did, I promise you, that drives me insane and I, I was like so embarrassed, I'm like, no! In fact, before I left, I would typed it in to see what was there.
Maybe, I don't know, maybe.
I'll make sure you'll have that one. I'll give you mine, because it's right.
It says the right thing.
It does.
That's so funny.
Yeah.
No, I'm just talking in the A and R.
Yeah.
Yes.
Application.
It was wrong. Yes, it does, yes, it does, it was steal, I stole, I'm sorry.
But this is great, this is, this is awesome, you know, it, it lets them know exactly what they need. Very clear. Um, so it does say possible vote, so, oh, so let's take a vote about the, let's take a vote, what about the, um, memo being sent?
So, yeah.
To, um, the boards, committees, commissions, and then also we'll take a vote on this.
All right, so make a motion to send a memo to the other, what, what other?
Boards, commissions.
Boards, commissions, committees, um, for a quarterly, uh, joint meeting to be held on, on pre, I guess, preceding our, our scheduled, one of our scheduled monthly, uh, planning board meetings.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Cabral, aye.
McCaffrey, aye.
Wilga, aye.
All right, and now, so let's, with that one minor change. It's here. It's here, it's here. As long as you got the.
I do, and I'll make sure that it's the one that ends up being put out there in the world.
Um, so to accept this Form A, um, application.
I'll make a motion to accept the A and R Form A application with the one minor edit as listed.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
In the second, all in favor?
Cabral, aye.
McCaffrey, aye.
Wilga, aye.
All right, thank you once again, Nancy, this is excellent to have this done.
Yeah, I have, um, I'm gonna have C, um, Form C, Form B, ready for you for the next meeting.
Great.
And those will be the, the, the Form, Form B is not gonna be any different, it's just gonna change, change to look like all the same. And then the, the, the Form C will have more of the meats and potatoes in it.
Okay.
Cause that would, so if they're coming in with a preliminary plan, they're still preliminary, they still haven't quite figured out all the things that they're doing potentially. And then, but the definitive plan would have all of the, all, all of it in there, make sure that those things are, are paid attention to. I wanna make sure I'm going by what you have in your rules and regs, but there might be some new things that I would add. So what I will do is I'll add the new things in red, so that you know that those would have to be included in your rules and regs.
Ah, okay.
Before you could implement it.
Okay.
Right? Just so that you're covering all your bases.
Okay, so we'd basically wanna accept the draft minus those, but then once Serpeth is completed, the full.
Then you can add those in as your final rules and regs as you adopt those.
Okay.
That's the way I would do it.
All right.
But I'll make sure that I.
So then Kathy will just have to keep two copies.
I could make two separate, right, one that you could have now and then one that you could have later. And the red would be the different.
Okay, excellent, all right, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the Fall Town Meeting Attorney General response, we kinda, we already went over that.
Yeah.
Um, there are a couple things that just, that came up, I wanted to discuss, you know, your resignation, um. I, I was, I do have a meeting coming up next week, just, uh, with the H R director and, and just to determine, um, next steps. Um, I, I would be, whatever you're, if you're willing to stay on in any capacity, um, if that's a possibility, um, I'd like to get the board's feedback. If, um, if there's anything that you want me to bring to that meeting next week for consideration, um. I mean, my, my thought is, you know, I'd like her to do an exit interview.
Mm-hmm, yeah, absolutely.
If, if she's willing or able to stay on as a consultant, e- even if it's just for the interim.
Yeah.
If we're gonna look again for town planner, cause that may be a lo- long process again. And I, I hate to be without, like, I feel, I feel like I don't know what I'd do without you now. It, it's crazy, in two months, the, the change of the dynamic, I'm sure Kathy, I mean, you must.
Not happy.
No. No, no, none of us are.
Happy.
You know? It's devastating, you know? Um, I think even all the feedback that I've got through our town, it's all been positive, all been positive.
Well, I, I feel really good that I have been able to have the impact on all of you, that means that I did my job.
Yep.
Like I was doing what I'm supposed to.
I don't, I don't wanna lose, and I, I, I went through the sadness, I went through the denial, I'm mad, I'm just like.
Devastation.
Yank him off. You know? Um, but so, you know, I'd like to have, if, if you're open to that conversation, you're open, I'm sure.
I, I think that's very fair.
If anybody, I don't know if Jack or Dave, if you are still there.
Jack off.
If you have.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm still here and, uh, you know, I, I, I would love Nancy to hang around kind of as much as she can.
Thank you, Jack, yeah. I thought it was David. Yeah, oh, thank you, David. Jack, are you still there? You're on mute if you are. He might be in the middle of something. All right, so, um, also, oh, um, Monday's select board, they discussed an economic development committee. Um, I think they're gonna wait until after the election to form that, but I was concerned that they didn't mention a planning board member and I know, like.
That'd be great.
I'm, I already have CPC.
Mm-hmm.
I know Dave is on Serpeth, Jack's on master plan, I don't know if either John or Dan.
What is that, the economic?
Economic Development Committee? I, I was hoping to maybe send a memo, just say, you know, would be interested in having a planning board representative there.
Yeah.
For that, because.
Yeah.
It just seems.
Either you, I don't mind doing it.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do.
All right.
That's fine.
Um, and I, I mean, it's not on the agenda, so I wanna, I don't wanna take a vote, but we have discussed it, so if, are you able to send a memo as well?
Send a memo to that, yeah.
To the select board, just saying we discussed, um, and we would like the opportunity of having a planning board member at that table.
As we were asked.
For that committee, when it's formed, economic development.
Absolutely, I think that would be a good idea.
And then, um, you included the zoning map in here for the goals and then, um, there was something else with the solar panels, I wanted to just mention that you were able to get done with them.
Oh, the bond.
Yeah.
So you have, um, uh, the solar project that was done on Crooked Lane, off of Crooked Lane. So, um, there's a decommissioning bond that's associated with that project. So that decommissioning bond will last the life of the project. Generally, those are about twenty years, but tracking them is difficult.
Hmm.
So I was able to reach out to the, to the owner of the property and they were able to give me the updated bonds. So you now are updated until February twelfth of twenty twenty six.
Okay.
The treasurer holds the original bond and now that she has the original in her files with the contacts of who I dealt with, cause the company is from Spain, but they have a, uh, a, a stateside representative. And then I also gave a copy to the accounting office and, and Kathy will have the whole file on the bonds.
Okay.
Important to keep track of them, cause they won't.
Hmm.
And they were surprised.
Okay.
And then when I got tougher with them and said, you know, for the actual will be taken if we don't receive bonds within X, Y's time, they then found them. Actually, no, then they actually went and got them.
Hmm.
Cause their last bond was in a June timeframe, so they let it lapse. So staying on top of them, no one wants to be that person at the end of the project that dropped the ball and didn't do the decommissioning bond. And so now the internal team, the treasurer and the accountant are both aware of this as well, have contacts as well. And they can also track it as well.
Thank you, once again, thank you for getting that done.
Yeah.
So I, I guess the only other question I would have with regards to is, do we have any other solar farms?
I think that's your only one, the town that I know of.
That's Berkeley, you mean?
No.
Freetown? Oh, there's, uh, Lakel Country Club.
Yeah, I was gonna say Lakel Country Club.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, cause that's what, the whole thing with the, the subdivision is right there.
Oh, right, cause he.
That's private, yeah.
It's private.
It's private, it's his own, that's his own solar farm.
It's his own, okay, yeah.
And then anything on buildings doesn't count, right?
Right, yeah, they're on their own. Yeah, but where you had the, the application come in and they were permitted and a decommissioning bond is really important to hang to.
Oh, right.
Yeah, yeah, cause who knows what's gonna happen when they get to the end of the life? Are they gonna wanna put new solar panels up? Uh, I think they will, but if they don't.
Yeah.
And they, they abandon it, then the town still has those funds to, to go in and.
Remove.
Decommission it themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if anything, they could replace all those trees that are dead on Crooked Lane that I've been looking at every day that I drive by.
Believe me, Barbara used to say that all the time.
But I digress.
Is, is that the screening though?
That was supposed to be the screening. Now, some trees took, but the, what, eighty, ninety percent of the trees all died.
Brown.
Yeah.
So one of the conditions that you can put in in the future is to make sure you do two in a five year, you could even bomb them to make sure that.
Really?
Yeah, you can make them bomb that.
Oh, that's another thing, maybe we should add that to our conditions.
So that you.
Like our general condition, like.
Pay, they, they pay for the replacement of them. And they, they, sometimes you have the two year and then you have the five year because it may make two years, but it might not make three, so that covers the whole thing.
I mean, it looks awful.
I know we do have something in there for landscape, but I think, yeah, we probably wanna even tighten that language if we can on our standard conditions.
Back into the decision and see what the language says.
I know it was, it was not good enough because.
Yeah.
That was something Barbara.
I can leave you with tighter language on screen, on, on the screening and also on the bonds for the two and the five year.
Right, yeah, for like the maintenance of their landscape.
Exactly, yeah.
And those things are like, uh, what, Douglas fir, somebody puts a cigarette to them, it goes right up.
Right, yeah, and all the fires we've had this year, oh.
Yeah, I don't need that.
Okay, we do have a set of minutes from December twenty sixth, this was a long one, thank you Kathy. Oh, there was one, one word, just one word, I gotta be that guy. Let me see, page two. Second to the bottom paragraph, first line, more housing than, not that, just a typo. Anybody else? Edits?
I have to abstain.
Okay.
I think Jack, well, Jack can't vote.
We can't vote, so.
No, you, you can vote if you read it, if you watched the meeting.
Okay, yep, I did.
So we can still approve them. Or I think we can even still approve them with just a quorum of us.
Yeah.
Of the, the attending members, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the Thursday, December twenty sixth, twenty twenty four meeting minutes as, as with the one edit.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Cabral, aye.
McCaffrey, aye.
Wilga, aye.
Minutes are approved. Our next meeting is March twenty seventh, twenty twenty five at the Lakeville Police Station. Any other business?
I had one quick thing, was I was approached by a planning board member of Berkeley, said that they may wanna, they, cause they're into that housing tea, so they, they may, they may reach out to see if they can, um, if talking, they wanted to make, maybe wanna, I don't have like a meeting, but have a meeting with, to talk to the other planning boards for like Freetown and.
Yeah, cause so, so we're, we're in compliance because of our existing zone. But we know that it will affect us.
Well, now they're a surrounding town.
Yeah, because they just, with the startup of the new rail line, all of those communities that are connected to the South Coast Rail are now either adjacent or communities that have, you know, a station. So it would be like Freetown, Berkeley, Fall River, New Bedford. Kushner? Now we're out, yeah, it misses a Kushner, but are we, we'd be a.
We are adjacent now, because it's considered for Middleborough.
You guys were all.
But there's one in Freetown now, so that's why Berkeley is.
Yeah, exactly, that's why Berkeley.
Kinda go the same route as like Middleborough, kinda.
Right.
With that, so he, yeah, he, he reached out.
Yeah, I mean, reach out, I mean, I don't see.
Yeah, I don't know, I'll say what happens, I'm not, not, yeah, not, just, I said.
Do they wanna come on over and?
I don't think, they might be talking to try to find a meeting with them, so. My brother-in-law's on the planning board, so he, he had brought up to me at a fifth league gathering last week.
He's an alum.
Yeah.
My husband's an alum at Berkeley Planning Board, yeah, yeah, yeah. He's on there for twenty years.
Okay.
Yeah, come on, come on up.
All right, well, so, I mean, I hate to say it, but this is gonna be your last meeting, but potentially, unless.
Yeah, eventually otherwise.
Unless we can tire up. Keep her in Lake Cam office.
Love it.
But, um, yeah, I don't know what else to say except for thank you so much.
Thanks, I appreciate it, yeah.
I hope we can work out something.
I want you to, I would just want you to know, like, you are the best planning board I ever worked for.
Well, thank you.
You're the best planner that I have ever worked with.
I've worked with a lot more boards than you've worked with planners, so I can tell you, they're not all the same. And you are doing a great job, keep it up.
Thank you.
You're doing good for the town.
Like I said, I'm, I'm hoping we can keep you in some capacity if possible.
Yeah.
So, so you might not be able to get rid of us that easily.
Big muscle.
But, okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion in.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Cabral, aye.
McCaffrey, aye.
Wilga, aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Just kidding.